The order with the gavel and say you're gonna say a few words.
Yeah, or I was just gonna, I'll just say this and then. God, one minute.
Yeah, keep an eye on slam the gavel and call it order.
All right, you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Planning Commission meeting. Chairman Fudge has a note here that he'd asked us to read. So he requested that the, Chairman Fudge requests that the Planning Commission members be informed that he was advised by the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission not to vote or participate in tonight's meeting, or this evening's meeting due to a potential conflict of interest. And as this is the only item on the agenda, he was advised to just go ahead and skip the meeting. So you also noticed that our. So you also noticed that our vice chair Nelson Jet is not present, and so because both the chair and vice chair are not present, then we need someone to make a motion to elect one of the members that are present to run the meeting. It's called the Chairman Pro Tem, so if we, we'd entertain a motion for one of the members to nominate someone to run tonight's meeting.
I will motion for Jeff Bain to run our meeting this evening.
We also need, I guess, under Robert's rules, we just need somebody to also open the meeting since we haven't officially done that, so. Somebody wants to do that, then we can take up the motion.
We need a motion to open the meeting.
We don't need a motion to open it, we just need somebody to say.
Open the meeting.
We'll open the Planning Commission meeting for tonight.
Since there's been a motion by Forbes and a second by, who's the second by?
Lee.
Davies, we can take up that motion.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Game of discussion on the motion.
Okay. How do you vote?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
We're not using, we're not using clickers?
We are, but you missed it. He got a little too quick. So did you vote in favor? Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so Jeff, Jeff will run the meeting this evening, so if you want to start with item number one.
We will start with roll call.
McCune.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Bain.
Here.
Fudge. Jet. Forbes.
Here.
Worrell.
Here.
Van Velsen.
Here.
And Davies.
Here.
A quorum is present.
The current copy of the Open Meeting Act of Nebraska is posting it posted at the back of the council chambers. Feel free to refer to that if you need to.
And just since, since Jeff mentions the Open Meetings Act, I was also asked to just read this as well. Notice of this meeting was given in advance by posting in at least three places in the city as follows. The North Platt Public Library, the Lincoln County Courthouse, and City Hall offices. Notice of the meeting was also given to the chairman and all members of the Planning Commission. Availability of the agenda was communicated in advance notice and to the chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This particular public hearing notice was also published in accordance to Nebraska's Open Meetings Act in the North Platt Telegraph, which is a newspaper of general circulation within the city of North Platt. That was all done 10 days in advance of the public hearing specifically on July 26th of 2025. Additionally, notice was provided to neighboring property owners within 300 feet of the subject property by service, serviced by first-class mail, which was postmarked on July 25th of 2025.
Notice to the public hearing, the Planning Commission values your input, wants to hear from the audience during public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak must first be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to less than three minutes. Repetitive and excessively long testimony may be ended at the discretion of the chair. With that, the public.
Can I read this one?
Public hearing file number CU 25-004. Discuss and consider action on an application Trucks and Tierras Inter- Intergenerational Academy for a conditional use permit to allow daycare center to be located at 491-495 West State Farm Road in an A1 Transitional Agricultural District on property described as part of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section 16 Township 13 North Range 30 West of the Sixth Principal Meridium, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Okay, and with that, you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is some information regarding the Trucks and Tierras itself as far as operating hours, and then a location, a couple of location maps. As stated, the applicant is requesting to occupy a portion of Osgood Elementary School building to be used for a childcare center, replacing a childcare center that occupied the space for, from approximately 2020 to 2023. It will not require a new structure, should not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding property owners. The childcare center typically has no more than five to seven cars in the parking lot at any one time. Benefits of allowing this childcare center will be to maintain the existing 100 childcare spots and add an additional 40 to 60 childcare spots, increasing the number of avail- available childcare spots for the community. Planning staff has no objections to the conditional use permit application. The property has been the location of an elementary school for decades. As the community changed, the use changed, and the school became home to a preschool and daycare facility until recently. Placing, replacing the use with another daycare childcare facility will not be a detriment to the surrounding property owners. The applicants are here, if you have any questions for them, and I am happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Otherwise, the public hearing is open, so.
Come on up. Say your name and address, please.
Ryan Purdy, R Y A N P U R D Y, 334 West Weaver Heights Road is my personal address, North Platt College Address, 601 West State Farm Road. As I said, I'm the president of Mid Plains Community College, and I just wanted to clarify some assumptions and some misinformation that has spread regarding the purchase of Osgood. The college has discussed the possibility of an early childhood education center on campus for many years and long before I was in my current role. The cost of a suitable facility and the revenue shortfall that was being experienced with a McCook childcare center were the major deterrents at that point. At MPCC, we continuously look for ways to attract and retain more local students to stay in our service area and be physically present. We know that nearly 90% of our students from our local service area, our, our students are from the local service area, about 90% of those students stay within the service area. Programs and activities that provide these opportunities will be considered. When Osgood was listed for auction, its location, size, condition, and design fit well within the items noted above. We had no intent on soliciting tenants when we bid on the facility. I had talked to a few people regarding our desire to expand our early childhood education offerings, but nothing beyond that. Our intent was to take the next 18 to 24 months to plan for more permanent use of the facility while watching the population shifts in our area to provide needed workforce skills to fill the new jobs that came with these population changes. There was already a tenant in the building, and it was noted in the bid documents that the new owner would assume the lease. It was our intent and was shared that we would work with the tenant and allow them to stay through June 30th, 2026 with some modifications in the agreement. Trucks and Tierras was informed of the current tenant and was asked if co-location would provide any conflicts with the Child Development Center, and they answered no. Shortly thereafter, the current tenant's position changed, and they informed us they would not be honoring the current lease, it would not be paying rent, so Mid Plains Community College asked them to vacate the property. The college did not solicit Trucks and Tierras, and the first introduction of the parties was June 11th, just two days before the college closed on the property. The college had no information regarding the, the lair lease status. At that point in time, the plan was to leave the building mainly vacant, except for the current tenant while we took the time to plan the future. New academic programs require extensive planning and research and also require approval from the Nebraska Coordinating Commission for Post-Second Year Education and the Higher Learning Commission accrediting body. New athletic programs require approval of both Region Nine, our competing region, and the National Junior College Athletic Association. These requirements intense in governing board approvals can take more than a year in most cases. Mid Plains already has an early, approved early childhood education program in McCook, an expansion of that program that utilizes the partnership does not take additional approvals. We have no plans to solicit additional tenants of the space. We're working closely with Trucks and Tierras on practicum space for our students and the education classes. While the children in the center may not be college age, the ability of our education students to have the space on campus is a perfect example of why this makes sense for the partic- for the partial use of the former elementary school for the next two years while we plan for its long-term future. The arrangement with Trucks and Tierras will require the payment of utilities and property taxes assessed on that portion of the building as they are not exempt from property tax. This arrangement is educational. Osgood was built for education, and it will be continued to be used for education. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Colton Van Teicher, 112 North Dewey. I'm an attorney, primarily based out of Gothenburg. I, I practice once a week here in North Platt, have done so for the last year. I need to make a clarification based on a report from this weekend. I don't represent Trucks and Tierras or Holly Hill in any legal capacity. So how do I get involved in this conversation? About eight years ago, I became involved in childcare discussions in my community. Since that time, I have consulted with dozens of communities across the state of Nebraska, spoken multiple times across the state and federal level on the importance of high-quality early childhood education. I have done so as a way to indicate the, the downstream economic importance of childcare in our small-town communities and to highlight the, the extreme need that we show in rural Nebraska especially. So when we look at this particular application, I want to talk about numbers real quick. So census data shows in Nebraska Children and Families Foundation through their Communities for Kids Initiative has identified that North Platt has 1,099 children under the age of six who have all available parents working. Those are the kids that we would typically think need to have childcare. If both parents are in the workforce, they need someone to look after them. But as a community, you have 811 licensed childcare spots. I say licensed because those are the only child cares that are, that are eligible under Nebraska law to operate childcare facilities. Unlicensed providers are not permitted to do so. So when we look at that 1,099 and take off the 811, we identify, we have a gap of 288 kids who have all available parents in the workforce who need childcare. So when we look at this application, Trucks and Tierras currently serves 100 children, or that's what they're licensed for. If they were to lose their space, which they are under threat to do, that would be a drop of over 12% of your licensed capacity spots in North Platt. Now, this is a discussion that came up mid-May, well after the auction took place on May 1st. Trucks and Tierras was notified by their, their current landlord that they were going to terminate the lease at the end of August to no fault of Trucks and Tierras. They did what any business, small business should do. They tried to find another place to locate. They reached out to the community college and have worked to create a public-private partnership that is ultimately going to benefit this community because they will not only be able to serve the 100 kids that they're currently licensed for, but they will actually be licensed for 180. You will see an increase in childcare capacity of over 10% in the community. At the same time, the community college, through its educational program, will be able to have its, its students earn their practicum hours at a location onsite. But the flip side of that is you have children who will use this facility, who will get to benefit from being educated by individuals who are moving forward to the professionalization of the workforce. The second piece is, as a community college, we certainly have a student population that are go- that is going to need childcare, and this will serve this, serve that care in a location close to those students. And the last piece, when it comes to childcare, a lot of question, a lot of times I get the question, why do we have such a problem? The reality is, is the business model is broken. Providers cannot charge what it costs for them to provide high-quality childcare. So when we have conversations about overhead and, and items like rent, they had to be very careful when working with the community college. If the college came in as a private commercial property landlord and asked for an exorbitant rent based on their return on investment, this would not have worked for this childcare facility. But through this partnership, they are covering just their cost to the community college, and as a result, they're improving access, they're improving your capacity spots by over 10%. I'm going to turn it over to Holly Hill as well, and she has some things to share. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Hill. I'm the owner and director at Trucks and Tierras Intergenerational Academy. 521 East Knight Street. I have a couple of letters from some parents that one of their voices heard, but weren't able to be here. If you guys want to pass them around. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Val Hyde. I'm a resident of North Platt. I live at 721 West Eighth Street. I'm also the coordinator for Communities for Kids, Lincoln County. I just wanted to speak briefly on the, mostly the numbers that they spoke about just briefly. I think he, he took most of, of the data that I was gonna share, but I just wanted to share that, really focus on that, that gap number, and that's provided by the Nebraska and Children's Family Foundation. I have copies of, a few copies of that, if anybody wants to see that report. So just focusing on that number, and that's really how our nonprofit started many years ago, was when another childcare center went under. We know how difficult it was for our community then. So I just think this would help everyone in the community to pass this, and if you have any more questions just about capacity numbers and any data about childcare, you can reach out to Communities for Kids, Lincoln County.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Boston, local resident, address 4315 West Philip Avenue. I'm a proud North Platt resident, small business owner, and a parent of two children directly impacted by your decision tonight. I'm here to urge you to approve the conditional use permit for Trucks and Tierras daycare to operate in the Osgood School Building. This is more than a zoning matter. It's, it's a pressing need. This, if this permit is denied, 85 families, 100 children will lose childcare in this city where it is already hard to find. The solution is right in front of us. Osgood was built for learning and designed for kids. Yes Vote allows Trucks and Tierras to keep doing what this space was meant to do. Caring for children, supporting children, and supporting working parents, preventing this childcare crisis for dozens of local families. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julie Peterson. 402 West State Farm Road is my work address. I'm the interim director at UNL's Research Extension and Education Center. The direct across the street neighbors from the Osgood Building. We have about 50 full-time faculty staff there at our center, and we have about 30 to 40 more seasonal and temporary students who come in and work with us, and mo- many of them live there at the center right across the street. We've had two of our married graduate students who've had kids when it was Ladybugs at Osgood. My own kids go to Ladybugs and were at Osgood. I'm also one of the statistics, right, two working adults in the family. We, we experienced the closure of Kids Academy, looking for a spot in town. We're really lucky to be picked up at Ladybugs and be literally across the street from where my kids were when they were at Ladybugs there at Osgood. So just a lot of value for the university's Research and Extension Center right across the street as, as neighbors to Osgood and neighbors to Mid Plains there.
Hi there. My name is Bryce Harvey, 2618 Pawnee Avenue in North Platt. I am a 24-year-old, single, soon-to-be-a-dad through the miracle of adoption. I'm adopting a little girl out of foster care in Lincoln County. I run a marketing agency and serve North Platt full-time. I love this community and its commitment to quality childcare and education. My mother serves education. We have deep roots in our area. As a single foster dad on the road to adoption, Trucks and Tierras has been incredible, and it's been a great source of support for me as I travel, and I'm often between North Platt and Kearney. Trucks and Tierras' current lease ends on August 31st, 2025, and they need to move. They have a perfect opportunity to expand into the current Osgood Elementary Building. This move would be a huge win for the community, allowing them to care for more than 60 children and create new jobs. We all know that early childhood education and care is a pillar of our community. I'm very grateful for Holly and just for the care they provide because they don't give you a manual when it comes to this, I'm learning. And as going into this, being single and adopting a little five-year-old is, is terrifying, and so it's encouraging to have, have Holly and a daycare that I know that I can trust and I can get mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Madden. I reside at 402 West William here in North Platt, Nebraska. Starting off on a, a more personal level, I was raised anti-public school. I was homeschooled. I have 14 siblings, and I was anti daycare. I am a single mom of two. I have a three, almost four-year-old boy and a one-year-old girl. of two. I have a three, almost four-year-old boy and a one-year-old girl. They were being taken care of by family, and when I found out that my, that the family was placing them in a dangerous situation constantly, I reached out to Holly very late on a Thursday night, not even knowing anything about her. She was suggested from someone, and I said, hey, like, I need care. What's the situation? She's like, hey, why don't we meet? Let's meet up. Let's see if Trucks is a good fit for you, a good fit for the kids. The next Monday, they were enrolled. They have been there since March, so it's only been about six months. However, they have had amazing experiences. They come home, and my three-year-old is so excited every day. He goes, Mr. Ryan taught me a song. We played outside. He colors. He's very independent. He's grown a lot. He has learned friendship and values in a, he's, he's young, but his mind is absorbent. We have currently, Trucks has the opportunity to move into Osgood. As parents, any of us that are parents, grandparents, or just around children in any sense of care, you know how important it is for your children to feel safe and comfortable with their care providers. My children feel that way. They feel that way, and it is extensively important to me. Excuse me. We have the opportunity to help Trucks and Tierras Intergenerational Academy. Sorry. Not just survive, but thrive in our community. I've only lived in North Platt for just over three years, and the experiences through the childcare is amazing. The experiences that the kids have had, I work for the public school system, and that is a point that if you told me a year ago I would be there, I'd say, no way, because that's a scam. But it's not. The care that they receive, the learning they receive, it starts at a young age. It's not just high school and middle school, college. It starts when they're newborn, one-year-old. My one-year-old daughter will pick up her toys. She's learned to speak from Trucks and Tierras. She's learned so many things as a young child. This is our chance to support Trucks and Tierras Intergenerational Academy as they grow. The move would allow them to care for about 80 more children. That's up to 80 more families who have access to high-quality care. It also means they will be able to hire more staff, providing valuable jobs to our community. By approving this move, you're providing a seamless transition for an organization we all value, and we're investing directly in our community's future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Jacobson, 805 Stewart Avenue. On this daycare isn't just choosing to move, it has to move because their lease was up. Stopping this relocation affects 100 families, or no, 100 kids and 80 families, and dozen of working parents who depend on daycare every day. So this isn't just about politics or property. It's about keeping childcare available for our community. Thanks for your concern.
Thank you.
Gary Pearson, President of North Platt Area Chamber Development Corporation, 502 South Dewey. I guess I'm just going to state the obvious. We deal with existing employers and recruiting new employers to the community every day, and it's a reoccurring theme. We hear from employers that childcare is a huge issue. It is a community responsibility to deal with it. I'm also involved with One Nebraska, six regions, as is Emily, and this is a common theme we hear all across the state of Nebraska, is a concern over childcare. And so it's an issue as a community we definitely need to address. This seems like a, a good fit in a facility that was spent to, for education.
Anybody else?
My name's Megan Schroeder, and I live in 702 Amazon Avenue in Wellfleet. I'm a parent of three children attending Trucks and Tierras daycare and have for the last five years. My children, as well as myself, will be directly impacted by the decision before you tonight. I'm here to emphasize the importance of the approval of the conditional use permit for Trucks and Tierras daycare to operate in the old Osgood Elementary School Building. This is not merely a zoning consideration. It's a matter of community need and continuity of care. As a working parent, I require the approval of the conditional use permit, because access to dependable and secure childcare is vital for me to effectively support my family and fulfill my professional responsibilities. In a region already experiencing a shortage of childcare options, this would place significant strain on families and employers alike. Approving this permit means supporting working families like mine, helping us balance our responsibilities while ensuring our children have a positive and secure place to grow. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of this permit, ensuring that Osgood continues to serve its community and support working families in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill, I was just going to mention that if, if you, if you want to have these letters from the parents that you handed around here, if you want them read in for the public hearing, you can read them in, as part of the public hearing, if you'd like to.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the, oh, the hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, and so now you guys have the right to discuss amongst yourselves. And I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
I get to know better.
I, I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center to be located at 491-495 West State Farm Road in an elementary school building meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platt Code of Ordinances, Section 156.322, and approve and grant, and grant the conditional use permit requested with the condition that all elements of the application are complied with, based on the following factual findings. One, the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, and the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of land.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Okay, and this will move on to the City Council with a positive recommendation. City Council meeting will be held at 6 o'clock right here, following this meeting. And all you have to do is adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Just adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.